Jimenez.
Present.
Corales. Cohen. Carrasco. Davis.
Here.
Esparza.
Here.
Arainus. Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Liccardo.
Present, thank you Grace.
Corm, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I know we have just the final two portions of our budget presentations. I think Jennifer, we're going first to the appointees, is that right?
Yes, that's correct Mayor.
Wonderful. How would you like to proceed?
I think in the past, we've just kind of gone in alphabetical order.
Yeah.
So, I think we can start with, let's see, the, would be the, is it city attorney? It'd be first, right? No, no, yeah, right? Yeah, so city attorney, just, we could just go in order, just starting with attorney.
Great. Hi Nora.
So there's no presentations by the appointees, it's just Q and A.
Oh, okay, forgive me, I'm sorry. Right, let's then go straight to the council, and it just dawned on me, I'm not here, I thought it was a good idea for me to try this hybrid thing for a moment, and then realized I'm not actually present, to see who's, who's in the chambers to raise their hand. So, if, if you'd like to jump in, please just verbally indicate you'd like to do so, I'll be watching for folks on Zoom. I don't see any of my colleagues raising their hand to ask questions at this time. Okay, and if there's anyone present, and forgive me, I'm not sure which colleagues are present.
There's nobody present.
Okay.
Nora and I are sitting up here.
The lonely experience, I'm sure. Okay, well then, that's great, I'll just look at Zoom. I guess we'll move on then, thank you Nora, excellent presentation.
So the city auditor would be next?
Okay, Joe, do you have anything to say?
Not necessarily, just, you know, we're adding one position back that we lost during the COVID budgets, that's pretty much the, the only thing in our budget of note.
Thank you, and I appreciate everything that your team's doing with very scarce resources. Alright, questions from my colleagues, looking for any hands raised, and I'm not seeing any. Okay, let's move on then.
Okay, then next would be the office of city clerk.
Okay, and Grace, are you?
And I'm here. I'm sick, yeah, I'm sick, but I'm here.
Oh gosh, I'm sorry Tony. Thank you for, for, for signing in, it's, it's obvious that from your voice that you're not feeling well, so thank you for being here. Okay, Tony, did you want to say anything before we asked for questions?
No, I'm just here for questions.
Okay. Alright. I know I can say it for each of our appointees, thank you for all that you do with not enough resources. Okay, we're, I see one hand, Councilman Prawls.
Yeah, thanks Mayor, just for the clerk, considering sort of what the future has to hold here for this next year of potentially more of an in-person and potentially hybrid environment, how are you and your office preparing for that? And do you have, do you think that sort of everything necessary from the technology, the staffing, so just curious about that.
Well, in our budget, you have two positions that are, three positions that are over strength currently, two of them are being made permanent, and one of those is my hybrid person Grace, who you guys all know, she's been running all of the hybrid meetings, so we did account for that in the budget.
And you feel what you have is sufficient with those over strength positions now becoming permanent?
Yes.
And then, and then, okay.
Yeah, for hybrid meetings, yes.
Vacancies that you may have?
We currently don't have vacancies, well, we do because I just had somebody promote, so we're interviewing for that, but our office is really good with these positions that are being added in the budget, so it's converting, one additional person added, completely one new position, and then again, the three over strength, two becoming permanent, and one continuing on for another year.
Okay.
So for hybrid meetings, and then the technology isn't our office, so, but we've got, you know, the, the Public Works Department has been really great with, with the technology side of it.
Okay, that was all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Tony? Alright, we'll move on then.
Yeah, the next up would be the office of the city manager.
Jennifer, anything you'd like to say?
No, just again, I think we're all here for questions and answers if need be.
Jennifer, appreciate your team's efforts to, in response to that March message to assemble, I think under Kip, an effort to really focus on resilience in a variety of facets, obviously all the things, challenges we're facing around drought pandemic, sea level rise, et cetera. I guess the question is, you know, to what extent are we going to have sufficient capacity to go chase that federal and state money that might be out there for these initiatives? And I see Kip, welcome back Kip, I know you've, you've had challenge recently as well, so thank you for, for being here.
You're welcome.
So Kip, do you want to take that?
Sure, Kip Arkness, Deputy City Manager, and I will be working with the team to read up, lead up the resiliency effort. So, Mayor Liccardo, as you mentioned, there are significant amounts of both state and federal, and to a lesser extent nonprofit dollars that are out there that are available related to this. We're going to do a couple of things to more effectively go after those competitive dollars that we are not automatically entitled to. One is we'll be working very tightly dotted line with Sarah Zarate's team, Tom Westfall, and group that are in her intergovernmental relations office have really got a good finger on the pulse of what's out there. What they lack is the ability to go through and do the competitive grants and do the technical aspects of the grant, so we're going to be tied together with that team so they can guide us a little more directly toward where the most viable dollars are in relation to our priorities. This budget has some flexible funding that would allow us to put together more competitive grant packages, either by hiring consultants or building out the materials that we need, or in some cases where we have fee restricted people, we could actually pay their salaries to do that kind of grant work that wouldn't be otherwise eligible. But in any case, bottom line, we hope to use a combination of the IGR resources that are there, the resources that you would be making available in this budget, and then with a new position coordinating it within the city manager's office, a more prioritized and strategic approach toward going after those dollars. I believe that we will have the resources to have a much more robust effort going after those, especially over the next 12, 12 months where most of those funds will become available.
And I'm going to add that we also are adding a senior executive analyst in our IGR portion of the administration policy integral relations office, and making that permanent to specifically focus on the federal infrastructure money and on the sustainability and resilience planning money, and then we've got positions in other departments as well. So I think we're trying to be short up here.
That's great, thank you for all that, and who does the grant writing? Is that the new person who fills out FTE, or?
We'll probably do the grant writing in a, in a number of different ways. It's, it's, some of it is technical, and that will probably be the department staff still leading it, but in terms of overall packaging and putting the grants together, that's part of what I want to work with Sarah and the new person on is what's the best approach. I have a feeling it's a combination of an actual body and then resources to do custom writing and design work, because we've, we've actually found in other circumstances that, that some of that writing, it can, can be done through contract work very effectively, but you need somebody who's got an overall sense of coordinating, putting the bid package together, and hopefully that, that senior person in Sarah's office will be the one who's sort of the maestro of the grant writing, if not necessarily dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's.
I appreciate that Kip, my impression of those cities that have the resources that do this really well, have, you know, the designated person who is either writing the grants or understands how every grant needs to get written, so all the departments aren't sort of at sea trying to figure it out, so I think that's, that's super important, so thank you for that. Okay, Councilman Prawls, you had your hand raised, I'm not sure if that was from before? Okay, I'm going to assume that was from before, are there any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, that was, that was from before.
Okay. Other questions for city manager's office? Alright, we'll move on then to finally, I believe, the, oh no, the independent police auditor.
Yeah, we have, we have, no, the police, the independent police auditor returned with public safety, but the last one will be the office of retirement services.
Great. Well, Roberta, nice to see you sir, do you, you'd like to say anything before we go to questions?
Good morning Mayor and council members, no, I don't have any prepared statements, I'm just happy to address and answer any questions that, that may come our way.
Okay, thank you. I had one, but before we go to my questions, want to see if others have any questions for retirement services? Okay, I, I know this has been a really tough time in the market, and I know this is not your job to go prognosticate, but I, I do know with our five-year smoothing, we have a little bit of room for a downturn in the market before our position gets adversely affected with regard to our funded status, and I was hoping you might be able to let me know what, you know roughly where that threshold is. I know the market's, depending on how you're measuring, I think it's close to, it's down to between 15 and 20%, what, what can we take?
So, so a couple of things Mayor, first, I think overall, obviously through today or yesterday, we're down. It's not double digits yet, because remember we had a diversified allocation, so it is not all on equities, right? It's single digits, and we do have more flexibility or more buffer in the police and fire, so I believe if a couple of weeks ago when I presented to the council, I believe the, the police and fire can actually go to about a 10 to 12% loss before there are any expected increases in the city contribution for the following year. Again, this is the big caveat, is assuming all the other assumptions are on target, right? The fed made it has much less, I think in the 3 to 5% return negative on a market basis, but nevertheless, they still can both be below zero or in the negative range, and assuming all the other assumptions are on target, it wouldn't impact the, the expected contribution rates from the city for the following fiscal year. I don't know, does that answer your question?
It did, yeah, very well, thank you very much for that. I know I won't be here, but the next council's going to be mightily challenged if, I know if, if, if a downturn affects our overall revenues and obviously the status, they need to contribute more to the fund, so I, I appreciate your vigilante eye on that. Okay, questions for retirement services? And I'm seeing no hands. Okay, well, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Right, I think that exhausts all of our appointees, is that right Jennifer?
Yes, that's correct Mayor, and I think we're going to be going on then to fees and charges, correct Jim? So, and you have a presentation Jim?
No, we have no present, presentation, we just have staff that are here for any questions.
On the fees and charges book.
Okay, fees and charges, questions for my colleagues? Short story, the stuff is going up. Okay, I, I'm not seeing any hands. That should not be taken as satisfaction with increased fees by any stretch. I think we're all concerned about it, but we all recognize the very real challenges we face, for example, oil shale water rates are, are rising quickly. Okay, we'll then go to, I think, public comment, is that right?
No, actually, we're going to go on, we're, to the capital budget now.
Capital side, forgive me.
The capital budget and the capital improvement program, and we do have a presentation on that.
Right.
With, with, between the budget office and public works department, so there, I think Matt's coming down, and then we'll take questions, and then, then we can do public comment after the capital budget, and then we'll be done for the day, and then we'll have the city roadmap on Monday.
Thank you Jennifer.
Good morning Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director, joined here by Matt Cano, our Public Works Director, and we're going to take a brief walk through our capital improvement budget for 2223 and our 2327 five-year capital improvement program. It did, much like we have for the rest of the operating budget, we organize our capital improvement program by city service areas that you see up, up, up there on the six panels. And split within them are a number of individual capital programs that Matt will walk through in the second half of this presentation. But starting off with some of the budgetary figures, this is a slide that we saw just a couple of days ago. Today, we're going to focus on that 27% slice segment for the capital funds. Again, most of these funds are generated from revenues that have restricted use for the rehabilitation renewal of capital assets, and so that's what the other thousand page banner that you have there talks all about. Looking at a historical comparison of our five-year CIP, we see we're about at 3.4 billion over a five-year period. That number will, will, will kick up a little bit when we get to the adopted budget and we sort of carry over some funding for projects that are already in process that need to kind of continue into the next fiscal year, that number will, will jump up a little bit, so we expect that the final adopted 2327 CIP will be pretty close to where the 2226 CIP is. And a lot of that bump that you, that you see there kind of getting up to these higher, higher figures corresponds both with the institution of the Measure T bond, bond program, as well as the substantial ramping up of the capital improvements at the regional wastewater facility. Looking at the source of funds we have for all of our capital program, we kind of see a breakdown here. The, the largest piece there is the contributions, loans and transfers, although we don't have any loans here, it's just a sort of a category that we have, but most of those are in form of transfers, which we'll walk through in a little bit. Beginning, beginning fund balances, this is where we start the year for 2223, and that gets spent down over the five-year course of the CIP, followed by some borrowing, following, borrowing instruments, revenue from other agencies, some tax fees and charges, interest, and some small amounts of miscellaneous revenue and developer contributions. Looking at contribution loans and transfers, so that's about $800 million, the bulk of that is from our special, special funds. The largest contribution is from this sewer service and use charge fund to the water pollution control capital program for about 300 million, and then another 170 million to the sanitary sewer capital program. So, a lot of those revenues collected from rates go in then to fund a lot of the capital improvements, and then we do have another 158 million related to the airport surplus revenue fund going into the airport capital program. The general fund slice that you see there is for projects with no other funding source. The biggest piece of that really is the, the annual contribution of about 3.75 million over five, five years for replacement of our fire apparatus. Beginning fund balances, again, this is the amount of money that we start with at the beginning of the five-year CIP that then gets spent, spent down, and we just show a breakout there of the individual capital programs, and they're starting beginning fund balance. For financing proceeds, we've got about 680, 80 million there. The largest component of that is the bond work we're going to do for the regional wastewater facility for 450 million in 222023. We've been working on a combination of sort of short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes, and then periodic long, long-term bonds. This one's been planned for, for a number of years, and now it's about to happen, so we'll have a big issuance in the next fiscal year for that. And then about $200 million there for our Measure, Measure T program for the next five, five years. I think that last issuance, the next issuance will be in 2324. And then we're using a little bit of commercial paper in the airport capital program for their airport facilities division relocation project. Looking at revenue from other agencies, pretty big component, trying to use other folks' money as best as we can. The biggest component of there is from the state government. A lot of that is for pavement maintenance work that's done in the traffic capital program. Similarly, from the revenue from other agencies, we've got about 140 million from that, comes from VTA for traffic capital purposes also. Most of the federal government funding there, about 100 million is for the airport improvements over the five-year CIP, and then of course to see the 165 million for the other agencies who use the regional wastewater facility and contribute to its capital improvement work. We do have a number of taxes, fees and charges that, that fund the CIP. The biggest slice there is what we also know as our CNC funds, our construction and conveyance tax funds. That is, you know, a tax on property transfers. Much of that goes into the parks capital program, but there's also components that go into the public safety program, the library program, the, the communications program. Definitely seen a pretty big jump in the CNC revenues in the current year that kind of gives us a higher baseline on the next five, five years. So we, we keep an eye on and try to budget it relatively conservatively, so it's, it's, it's nice to see that we have some higher revenues to work with in, in those programs. The construction excise and the building and structural construction tax, those are taxes that are assessed on private development projects based on the valuation of those projects and goes to support the traffic capital program. And then the other large slice there is the airport passenger facility charge fee that gets assessed, and those proceeds are, are coming back up, which is good to see at 130 million over the next five years. And then just looking at the CIP in total, we kind of see them ranked there from the, so the biggest to the smallest program. And so we see traffic and water pollution control are neck and neck there at about 28, 28%. I do want to kind of note here that the storm sewer system, although sort of smaller, pretty much a smaller component of our CIP, we have been funding, that is primarily funded through a transfer from our storm sewer operating fund. Because that fee assessment has been flat for a number of years, and we've been spending down the balance doing important capital program work, that, that operating fund is sort of running low on proceeds. And in the next couple of years, we really need to make some pretty tough, tough choices about how to balance our expenditures between the operating side of the storm sewer program and the capital side of storm sewer program, and probably need to identify some other funding sources so that we can make sure that we can continue to maintain and rehabilitate that infrastructure. So we'll be having more conversations with council over the next year or two on that. And I think with that, I'm done with my stuff, give it over to Matt here.
Thank you Jim, Matt Cano, Matt Cano, Director of Public Works. This slide, the graphic on this slide shows the alignment with the general plan, and which is, which is critical for our capital program, and not only to be aligned with the general plan, but also to be aligned with the community expectations, the various specific and master plans from, that many of these programs have as well. So there's a lot that goes into the planning of these projects. Even though I, I am the one person here with Jim today as a public works director, you can see a lot of folks in the audience here, and I'm sure there's more on Zoom. As most folks know, but I just want to make sure everybody does, the delivery of the capital improvement program is nearly, or every department in the city touches a capital improvement program, and many departments have extremely significant roles. And we can't have every department down here in the box, it's not big enough, and so that's why I get the fortune to represent everybody, but this is really a partnership with many departments having very, very significant roles, and so I just want to thank everybody for, for moving this forward together. So this, this slide, you know, this, this slide is about equity and about how we, you know, we have continually, are continually, and we're continually learning and, and iterating and making, you know, so that we can get this right, continuing to supplement our technical analysis of which projects to do with equity considerations in the capital improvement program as we plan which projects to implement, which projects to fund. It is complicated, because many, most of the capital funds have different restrictions based on how they're collected. So, for example, the first bullet here, rehabilitation of the sanitary sewer system. It's, as part of our analysis about how we can, how or if we can make any changes based on equity, we also need to look in, and we are looking into the, any legal constraints that, 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 that are there, that exist, so that we can really figure out how to move forward and continue to blend equity with the technical analysis to make the right choices for our community. The second example, the local and neighborhood pavement maintenance program. The transportation team cross-reference selected pavement maintenance zones with census tracts designated by the MTC as equity priority communities, and those results showed that roughly 80% of the local and neighborhood streets designated in these EPC areas will be maintained by the end of 2024. Other traffic capital projects such as traffic signal, safety vision zero, bike facilities and grant programs, or grant projects target resources towards equity as well, as shown here on this next slide. Over 50% of the traffic CIP budget allocations for safety-related projects have been made in equity score areas of eight or 10, as you can see on the map. And, and then approximately 32% of projects were implemented in 12% of the city where the combined equity score is eight or above. So again, a lot, as, as I mentioned in the prior slide, really, really focused now on trying to blend or blending equity considerations with the technical analysis as we continue to move forward. This slide discusses the Measure T public safety and infrastructure bond. We actually are coming on this, this coming Tuesday the 17th with a full report on this program to the mayor and city council. Over 300 million, 300 of the 650 million in bonds was dedicated towards street repair. The other largest pot is public safety projects, and there's a number of their pots that are on here as well. And one great success is, within the past two weeks, we did open Fire Station 37, and that is now operational for the public, and we look, looking forward to a lot more projects to come in the, in the next few years. Then, now I'm going to flip through the programs in the capital improvement program. So the storm sewer system, oh no, wait, this is the, this is the sanitary. My, yeah, sorry, okay. The sanitary sewer system consists of 2,000 miles of sewer mains serving the city of San Jose, as well as 300, three other jurisdictions, and conveys the sewage to the regional wastewater facility. The storm sewer system consists of roughly 1,100 miles of sewer mains and 31 stormwater. This is separate from the sanitary sewer system and collects stormwater that is eventually conveyed into Guadalajara River or County Creek. And green infrastructure is a major component as we move forward that we're working even more hard, or working more to implement into this so that we can filter that water before it, better before it enters our waterways. Water pollution control, this, the San Jose, Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility is a wastewater treatment facility serving eight south Bay cities and four special districts. A total of 947 million will be used to renovate and upgrade the infrastructure to ensure capacity and reliability. Water utility system, the San Jose Municipal Water System provides service to approximately 118,000 residents in five areas within the city of San Jose. A key focus for this includes the construction of new facilities, maintenance of existing infrastructure, and improvements to the water utility system facilities. Library, the library capital program objective is to provide readily accessible quality library services to the residents of San Jose. The CIP provides funding to acquire physical and electronic materials, install automation equipment and systems, and support facility repairs and improvements. Parks and community facilities, this program provides oversight of the planning and development of just over 3,500 acres of parks and open space, 16 city-operated community centers, as well as a number of their centers with, with our partners, as well as over 61 miles of publicly accessible trails. The proposed CIP plans for over 200 major projects and over 100 small projects such as the County Creek lighting, County Creek Trail lighting, and Starboard Park Playground. Public safety, the major focus of the public safety CIP is delivering projects funded by the Measure T bond measure with roughly 190 million allocated to various projects, including new facilities such as Fire Station 37, which I mentioned we recently opened, as well as 30, Fire Stations 32, 36, and relocations of existing facilities that are part of Measure T such as Fire Stations 8 and 23, and also extremely important rehabilitating our aging and aging facilities. Stations 8 and 23, and also extremely important rehabilitating our aging facilities. Airport. The airport CIP will continue to focus on projects identified in the master plan, which focus on refurbishment of current facilities to maximize safety, improve efficiency, and increase passenger service. Some priority projects include the Facilities Division relocation project, Terminal A and B ramp rehabilitations, as well as the airfield geometric implementation. Parking. The parking CIP maintains and improves existing parking facilities, upgrades, and replaces both on-street and off-street parking equipment, and develops new facilities. The proposed CIP has been programmed around addressing larger-scale maintenance needs and rehabilitating the aging garage elevator infrastructure. Traffic. The mission of the traffic CIP is to implement and manage a multimodal transportation system that is safe, efficient, environmentally sensitive, and maintained in the best condition possible. The traffic CIP includes investments targeted towards providing safe streets for all modes of travel and balanced transportation. Have a number of funds here, but we're almost through it. The communications, the communications CIP fund improves related, funds improvements related to communications facilities, as well as provides reliable and necessary public safety and non-public safety-related communications equipment to city employees. The municipal improvements CIP provides improvements and maintenance for city facilities and their operating systems that are not funded through other CIP programs. The goal of this program is to develop and maintain functional city facilities that meet the service needs of both our internal and external partners. Service yard fund. The objective of the service yard CIP is to maintain and improve the existing conditions at the city's yards by implementing projects that reduce safety hazards, increase efficiencies, and provide necessary equipment and materials for operations. Lastly, is a developer-assisted project CIP, which includes multiple undergrounding projects for the most part, but there's, so utility undergrounding projects. And with that, we're available for any questions.
Great, thank you. All right, let's go to questions, my colleagues. Not seeing any hands. I had just a couple, Matt. One is, I know we're going to be debating Measure T projects on Tuesday. I've read the memo, which was very thorough. Obviously, we've got some shortfalls on several projects about fire stations, and, you know, I'm concerned about scaling back on the plans. In District 7, I think it was in Station 23 or 32, I get the two mixed up, and then I know 30, the other one is either 32 or 23 that is toward the end of the line. I'm concerned about whether we have budget to get it all done. Do, have we already undertaken analysis to see what state and federal money might be out there to supplement our Measure T funds to get these, these basic public safety projects over the goal line?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. We have had conversations with the city manager's office team, as well as the external lobbyists that work with our team about whether there's anything out there that we could, we could find. And to date, we haven't identified anything. There's, there is likely more we can do on that end, but we have had those internal conversations and with our lobbyists, and there's nothing that we've been able to identify at this time.
Given maybe some of the state funding, it's more focused on environmental issues as I think about maybe some of the water and LED lighting, some of those projects have come up short, are there opportunities there?
Possibly. We have had, and we'll continue to look and definitely take this feedback back, and we'll talk to the team. The one Measure T project, the River Oaks Stormwater Capture Project, Environmental Services and Public Works work together, and we do have a grant that is supplementing that project. And so we are stretching that money a little bit farther than we would have otherwise. But we'll continue to look, but there's, other than the one I just mentioned, there aren't any, isn't anything we're currently aware of that we're tracking towards.
Okay. I know I'm not telling you anything you don't know already, but in my many conversations with state and federal officials on these grants, the fact that we have a local commitment to do something with local money already committed, it makes us much more competitive than we don't. And that's the one thing about Measure T is we got some local money, and I just hate to think we couldn't leverage dollars that might be out there for anything from, you know, water projects, LEDs conversions, and we're short on that account as well, and even open space. You know, Lake Cunningham, I know is one project that's been discussed quite a bit. You know, I'd like to believe there'd be opportunities, but anyway. So thank you for that. I know I should ask this question of John Akin when he was here about the airport, but can I just probe?
John's here.
Oh, he is, great, okay, wonderful. John, I know we've been through really uncertain times, still are, with regard to airport traffic and flights. What, I guess the question is whether we are committed on our, our terminal project, I believe it's six gates, correct me if I'm wrong on that. If we're committed to move forward with that regardless of what we're seeing today, or if there is some go-no-go decision in the future. My, last I checked, I recall we were full speed ahead, but I'm just wondering if any, any news has made you rethink that question?
No, right now, Mr. Mayor, we are working towards the Phase 2 of the terminal project. In this budget and probably next year's budget, it's mostly focused on greenfielding the area. We have a lot of things we need to move out of the way, and so we're working on that, starting with the facilities building that's in this CIP, gets things out of the way so that we can proceed with it. I think our estimate is we'll probably start the planning for Phase 2 next year, probably in the late summer timeframe, and go right into construction, but we got to get some of the things out of the way first. So it's still focused, the airlines are still supportive of it, because we're, even with the interim facility that we built a few years ago, we only have two gates left right now that are not obligated. So the growth is coming, and we still need to stay focused on it.
Okay, great, wonderful, thank you. And my final question was for John Ciceroelli, I know that, I'm not sure if John's here.
Yes, he is.
He is, great. John, I know we've been circling around the idea of a parks measure for some time, and, you know, for understandable reasons, haven't moved ahead. And I'm wondering to what extent we've explored fully whether some citywide infrastructure financing district or property, the equivalent, I guess, of a citywide P-bid is something we would, we had already considered, given the fact that I think all parks we know enhance all of our property values, for those of us who are homeowners or property owners. Is that something we've looked into with the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. John Ciceroelli, Director Public, or sorry, Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services, sorry, Matt. Flashbacks to my construction days. The, you know, it's interesting, I think the conversation that got us to the ballot measure started with looking at a facilities district, like you're explaining, and so it sort of moved in a different direction, but now that we're in a holding pattern, it's probably worth revisiting and exploring that, so that's certainly something that we could take on.
Okay. All right, happy to talk more about that offline, thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Hi, just a quick follow-up to your question about fire stations. I know that there's two fire stations remaining on the, on the plan, the last one being the one in District 4, Station 23. Is there enough money set aside currently in the fund to cover those? Are we, do we feel like there's a shortfall coming on the last project at Station 23, or are we going to be able to cover it?
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Cohen. Matt Kano, Director Public Works again. We have, we have a lot of, we have a lot more, we, excuse me, I'm sorry. We can definitely discuss more on Tuesday as well, however, I can answer the question today too. Based on today's cost estimates, or yesterday's cost estimates, I would say we currently have enough in the budget for the fire stations. However, it seems that every day, costs are continuing to escalate. Had a meeting yesterday where our team was telling us that the latest numbers for steel and other materials are growing again. And so that's why I said today or yesterday's cost estimates, because we are worried. If inflation continues, construction prices continue to go up, if we don't have any reserves for the public safety program, there's an extremely high risk that the last project will suffer, similar to what happened to Fire Station 37, and that it was supposed to be delivered as part of the 2002 bond measure, but there wasn't enough money left, and so it sat, and in 2022, it was opened. Fire Station 23 is the last project that we're going to be doing in the public safety program. That's primarily just because it's been harder to identify a land to site the new fire station. So again, I guess to summarize, currently, we have the money in the budget per the cost estimates, but that, the risk of inflation and costs continuing to go up increases every day. And so the more we have in our public safety reserve program, the more comfortable I feel about being able to deliver on our commitment to the voters to deliver all the fire stations, including 23.
I guess we'll have a conversation Tuesday in our Measure T discussion about making sure we set aside the proper amount in our reserves so that we can cover that. Because 23 is obviously an important station, and in a growing area that's still operating out of a very, very tiny old facility. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Foley.
Good morning, everyone. Matt, thank you for the good report, and Jim too. I have a question for you on Slide 29. You mentioned this is the underground utility districts in various areas. Can you educate me as to what those are and what the scope of the project is and the, and any sort of timing that's involved in that?
Chair Matthew Nguyen, our Deputy Director from Public Works, is gonna, is gonna come down and give a better response to that than I can.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Matthew Nguyen, I'm a Deputy Director for Public Works. So on the slide right now, we have several projects. Let's start with the Rule 28. Rule 28 basically is the rule that was put together by the CPUC that allow local agency to underground overhead utilities, including PG&E light, AT&amp;T, and communication cables. So under, currently, we have several projects that we already have a plan for construction. And out of all of these, I believe Delmas is the project that we, we are in the final design phase. Give me one second. Yes, so the white, sorry, I'm going a little bit backward here.
No worries.
White project, White Road project is already complete in 2021. So we complete that project with PG&E support. Lincoln and Kirk Avenue has already been complete. Oh, I'm sorry. We are waiting for information from PG&E to proceed with the design for the, for the Lincoln and Kirk Avenue. White Road has already been complete as well. So we are going to City Council in June 7, and in that, we will have a chance to clarify all of the status of all of these. But basically, these are projects that we have on our book, and either they are in the design phase or already complete recently.
Okay, great. So the Rule 28 is a CPUC rule that allows us to do, to convert our utilities or move our utilities underground, and these are the areas that we're doing this?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, looking at Kirk Park, that's, well, on June 7, you're going to be giving us a more formal, more detailed update. Is that correct? Okay, all right. Thank you, that answers my questions, I appreciate it. That's the only question I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just want to follow up on that question a bit, on 20B fees, and Matt, I know, happy to take this offline, because we were talking to Jake Guevara, I think, about a challenge with PG&E and power that was to support a supercharging station for Tesla in West San Jose, and apparently there was some mix-up with regard to PG&E and what they're doing without talking to the city. Is there an ability for us to use those, I mean, we've got a lot of 20B and 28 fees are sitting around reserved, to be able to combine those dollars with maybe what a particular developer or builder might want to invest in a particular area to underground together so that we essentially could get more done that way? I know undergrounding is probably desired in that neighborhood, just like it is everywhere, and the ability to get the supplemental power undergrounded with the help of 28 or B fees may move things along more quickly. Do we have that flexibility?
Thank you for the question, Mayor. I'd have to follow up to, I think there's probably, overall, I would say, yes, we have flexibility to partner, however, there's probably nuances to each specific issue, whether it's in a undergrounding district, the purpose of the project, the requirements of the project. And so I, I'll, I'll explore that a little bit more, and I'll talk that through a little bit more with the team and get you a more thorough answer to that question.
Okay, happy to talk offline, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Cohen, I assume your hand's up from before, is that right?
Yeah, sorry.
No, no problem, okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, that's only one and a half billion dollars we'll be voting on. All right, I think we are concluded then with capital for now, you know, we'll be talking some more on Tuesday. Jennifer, was there anything else your team wanted to present?
I just think we have public comment, and then we can conclude for today, then we'll be back at, is it 9 o'clock on Monday morning for the city roadmap? And we've got two sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, but it will take as long as council desires to discuss the roadmap on Monday.
Just understand, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, I think we're ready for public comment, but go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, if we're able to conclude that work in the morning, I assume we won't need the afternoon session, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll be completely concluded with this part of the budget process. We've still got a lot more to go, but the study sessions will be concluded.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to public comment then.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for this item today. Um, yeah, it was, it was just nice, or items, I guess, today. You know, the Measure T process, they, the Measure T Oversight Board was really asking for help from yourselves as city government at this time last year. They were really looking for ways to reach out to the public and to be more engaged. And I'm learning today that it's through that engagement that the program issues that you're working on now could have facilitated a more, it could have given us more choices at this point, and you kind of left it alone, you left their questions alone. And I brought in my two cents of what the future of, you know, good civil rights and civil protection practices can do for the Measure T process, and overall, you know, good practices of democracy and community. Those factors, you know, that's what Measure T, the board was looking for. And, you know, really noting today, it could have created an overall more comprehensive community process and given yourself more choices at this time that you're community process and giving yourself more choices at this time that you're lacking. So I mean, chalk it up again, I mean, to what, you know, open public policies and accountability and its guidelines, its legal precedents can really set for our future. I mean, it has a really important course towards ideas of peace and not war and open democracy. And it's those factors that can help in a variety of ways. That I wish your downtown parking board would also take note of as well in what, how that can introduce. I think people would be interested to come to downtown more knowing that we have good open public policy practices with our tech. So you know my feelings. Thanks for the meeting today.
That was the last public speaker. Back to council.
Great. Thank you. All right. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody. See you Monday.